This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. Who's serving as my secretary, Robin?
Uh, nope, Sandra's here.
Oh, okay. All right, five o'clock. I'm gonna have to take over to my thing here. All right. Notice is hereby given that the Lago Vista City Council is holding a special called meeting on Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020 at 5:00 PM as prescribed by V T C A Government Code, Section 551 dot 041 to consider the following agenda item. Uh, we will have a work session. And we will be discussing the fiscal year 2021 budget workshop. Uh, before I get into the actual work session, Sandra, please note that, council members are present minus Tim and Dawn, I don't see them. Uh, minus Tim and Dawn at the moment. And we'll add them on if they come in later. And citizen comments, is there anybody from the audience who has any comments before we get started? Nope, okay. So we will go into our work session at this time. And it just says on your, on the agenda, it says work session fiscal year 2021 budget workshop. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Josh and he will actually um, present some of the topics that may, may be covered. It may not be exclusive, but he's got some of the topics that we will discuss.
Thanks, Mayor. I just shared the screen. Hope everyone can see that. You may have to zoom in a little bit. So typically when we have our, any budget workshops, they're either a planning session with just a little bit of guidance or they're after we've created a budget document. At our last session, part of the discussion with council was, let's create the budget document so we can get closer. So once we present that document for everyone to see that it'll be closer to the goals of the council. So you'll see before you, here's just a list of the topics and kind of the, the walkthrough skeleton of how we're going to go through our time today. We'll set up with the goals for this workshop. Then we'll look at the overview of the budget using the ClearGov module. We're not going to drill down at that time unless council gets to that point and wants us to look at something specifically. Then I'll briefly go over the budget process timeline for what's left in this, in this year. Then we'll look at the projects page, the fund balance and debt pages, the capital request pages, and then we'll go over the personnel request. And then there was actually a couple of other items, Mayor, that I didn't put on there. This next item is discussion and discussion by council. And then we'll schedule the next budget workshop. So there you go. Those are on there and it just, that'll give us that skeleton to get moving. Any questions on that breakdown? Obviously, once we get going, anything the council brings up, we will go, uh, we'll go into that area. So in for the goals, what staff's looking for is, as I previously said, typically what we're doing is we create a proposed budget and a budget message. And that's, that's what we've broken down. If you look at my screen, if anybody can see it. This is the document that we present to council. That'll include the C I P, that'll include the line item departmental budgets. It'll include references to any type of plans, fee schedules and other items so that council can review those items as a whole. What staff is looking for, for today is direction from council members on items that they've reviewed or things they would like to see for next year. For example, the street plan that we, that council has adopted and we've been operating under calls for an estimate of $2.8 million in street projects for next year. Those items we'll look at under the capital request. And we want to see if council is good with that number or if council does not want to see $2.8 million in just those street projects for next year. I will note, Sandra, I just saw that councillor Tim Collins has arrived to the meeting. So anyway, so on the goals, we also want to look at whether it's the personnel request. Are we looking at adding personnel? Are we looking at adding equipment? Are we looking at the tax rate, utility rates, impact fees, other type of fee structures that we need to discuss in this budget process? Cause our goal, one of the goals is to try and bring all these items together. The challenge with using a new module is we're doing these things online so we can create a document that people can look at, not only now as we're building the budget, but they can look at it throughout the year. And this module, learning that module has been a challenge for some of us because it's new and it's tricky and it's technology. But we think that once it's up and running, we'll be able to effectively use it. Questions on that, in terms of goals? I'm going to minimize this, this topic screen, Mayor, and just move it off and then we'll, we'll jump right into this ClearGov if you're, if you're okay with that.
So is, is everybody in the audience? Do y'all know where to go to ClearGov and, and find this?
So, so if you'll just go to, I'm going to walk you through it here for people that are watching at home and for our council as well, because council will have two separate ways to look at it. If you go to cleargov.com, you'll see this home screen that I, that I'm sharing with you now. There's a search box up here. You're going to type in Lago Vista, Texas. It's going to pop up two things. It's going to pop up Lago Vista, Texas and Lago Vista I S D. You're going to click I S D.
No, you're not.
And you're going to click city of Lago Vista. It's going well so far. So once you get to, to this page, the items that we're talking through, and I'll show different pages on the backend, on the admin side. But this page here will lead you through the process we're at right now with the council and how we're preparing your budget. For example, what you see on the screen right now is a financial overview. And here in this dropdown box, it says general fund. So we're under general fund and as of right now, the revenues and expenditures in the general fund are roughly the same, 12.6 million dollars. And so that's all the revenues and expenditures for the general fund. And then as you scroll down, what this ClearGov module does is it gives you different breakdowns. If you look at this middle graph right here, this chart, you'll see that FY 20, which I have my cursor on, had budgeted revenues and expenditures of estimated 8.1 million. When you look at where we're at this year, you'll see 12.6 million estimated. The difference in this year and last year is we're going ahead and budgeting the transfer from the general fund into the capital projects fund so that those dollars are budgeted to show those are fund balance reserve dollars. So that's how you'll see the difference of an estimated $4 million between here because it's $4 million worth of fund balance reserve capital projects dollars. And you can do this same thing if you go to utility fund and any other fund. What ClearGov will do as well, it gives you, these are the numbers they pull from the last census. This is the demographic information. It's going to show you the population, the meeting household income. This shows you median home value and then it shows multiple breakdowns, all pulled from the last census. If the, if our current population doesn't fill out their census any better than we're doing now, we'll still be using the 2010 census numbers for the rest of our life because we're only have 25% reporting. So these numbers, which most of you know are off, it's hard to change them if we're not completing the census. So I'm going to go through a couple of these. Next screen down that I'm showing on the slide, it shows you debt service. So this is the total debt balance that we carry of 33, 7, 8, 9 million. This chart shows you the balance over the years and it'll show you, and the new bonds were there in 17 and then down in 18 and then 19. So you see those roughly $2 million payments coming out over this period here to bring that number down. And then the goal, when we get, after we get the audited number for FY 20, then we'll see it being estimated 31 million plus or minus. When we get into our projects as a whole, we're going to come back to this area here. This says latest projects. You can also get there by clicking this tab on the top that says projects. But this is going to show you all of the projects that are listed out for FY 21 that, that staff is proposing based on discussions that we've previously had. So all of these items, one through 35 have an item that we're going to look at. And that's, remember, that's on our breakdown of the items. What it does is it says you can click on each of these. So for example, we'll click on one that says street rehab overlay. You can click on that and it's going to tell you that it's part of the master plan. It's going to show you that liquid asphalt with striping drainage improvements and crack sealing. In 2020, we had the six main streets. In 2021, we're looking at 11 streets to have a rehab overlay. And what it'll do is it'll show you $905,000. And then here's a place for people to add comments on, on the bottom of each section. So for example, I see Ron, Ron could come to this page and type in a response right here and it would come in through the system and we would have a running dialogue from our citizens, which I think is a real value add. It's part of the thing, Mayor, that you were talking about last year on this system. So then we come back over. The difference you'll see here as well, we have personnel requests listed at the bottom of this screen. So starting here, we have personnel request included. And so these are items that we'll have to look at as well as we get into our discussion today. You gotta remember the projects are included in the budgeted numbers that you're seeing on the screen. The personnel requests have not been included. So when we're looking at the budget as it is now, any of these personnel additions that we make have to have a revenue stream to offset them. And we'll click on those, but for example, we can click on recreation coordinator right now. It'll show you, uh, this would be a part-time recreation coordinator position. It would, um, it shows you the park department currently has a director, a park supervisor, and the seasonal employee, and the seasonal employee is not budgeted for FY 21. This part-time position is set at $15 per hour, 24 hours per week for 52 weeks. Total budget 18,072. That's what the impact would be on the general fund inside of the parks department. Therefore, if that's something that we approve, then we'll need to have an offsetting revenue line item to fund 18,720. And so we'll get to that one. And let me show you this other page back on overview. So this is back to the overview page. You just keep scrolling down. This is a fund balance page and this is part, we'll, we'll look at that too. But the fund balance shows you what the fund balances are as of the end of the fiscal year. So end of last year, here are the fund balances. Reason being, when you're looking at balancing the budget for FY 21 in the general fund and in utilities, we're saying, can you still hear me? Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. It says my connection was lost. So if you can't hear me, just say something.
I thought it was me.
Nope. And can you still see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Sorry. So what this is showing you is this is the fund balance that you're using as your basis. So if you need to have a fund balance appropriation to balance the budget, here's that number. If you click this dropdown and we go down to utilities, here's your utilities fund balance as of the FY 19 audit. So that's also the number, and the fun part is it shows you the five years. But you need to know these numbers when we go in, in balancing. And so that's a, this overview page is, is fantastic. It provides that information. And then for people using this version, I've scrolled back up here. If you want to click on expenditures, give it a second, click expenditures. You can enter your home value here and then it'll show you a calculation for what your property taxes, how they're impacted by the budget for what you're paying on property taxes. But you'll notice at the top, first off, we clicked 2021. If we wanted to compare that to 2020, we would click here. But we're going to stay on 2021. Right now in this dropdown box, we're going to be in the general fund. And then it's going to give you breakdowns based on the numbers we have in now of what the per capita of the overall budget is, per capita based on 8,046 citizens. And this pie chart will give you the breakdown of how that 12.5 million is being proposed for the year. And this is, and here you'll see the general government's going to include multiple items, which would be police, library, finance, development services, et cetera. But then you're going to have individual breakdowns to show you public safety entails the police department budget and the dispatch budget. And it'll show you that this is $352 per capita per year for public safety. And then it gives you the breakdown of what those budgets look like over the past five years. This scrolls down into public, public works and this is basically, uh, street department and other public works functions within the general fund. And it'll show you the same chart here and it gives you the breakdown. Library, aquatics, non-departmental, parks and rec. And then aviation, remember aviation's been moved to its own fund. So it's going to show you $0 for 20 and 21, but it'll go back and show you 17 and 18 numbers because they were still part of the general fund at that time. And then at the end of every page, you have the ability to submit comments that anyone can be in the conversation. And then staff or council can respond to comments on here. So I think our goal was to provide an, a module, a mechanism or a system so that individuals had the ability to make comments on the budget, even if they weren't involved in a budget workshop or in a council meeting. The revenue tab on the top works the same way. So here, if we go to, instead of general fund, if we go to look at utilities, then that shows you the planned revenues for utilities for next year. Now remember, utilities function on their revenues. So the per capita wouldn't be based off of your ad valorem tax. It would be based off of revenues generated. And you would just look at that in terms of the water and wastewater bills generated per capita. And this gives you multiple breakdowns on, on how that budget's broken down. Okay. So that's the, that's the at home. It's going to be the live version. It's live now for people to view. And, and that's something that we're really excited about. So individuals can come and look at these pages now. When we complete our budget book, then the budget book will actually show some more information and it'll allow you to, to look at the line item details even closer instead of just into the terms of these buttons here. You will recognize once the page loads, you can download financials, which will give you the individual line items for the budget. And so that gives that complete transparency, which is what we're looking at. So now I'm going to click on our admin page. Any questions on that version? Okay. And if you do have something while I'm talking, if you just hit the chat button and type it in, then I can go back to it. But it's important so that people, um, I say at home, but anyone that doesn't have access to this admin page, which is city staff and council, that you can look at this document as well as we can and see what we're doing. So I'll touch base on the timeline. Today is July 22nd. Per the city charter, the city manager has to have a document and message, budget message for the upcoming fiscal year to council by July 31st. Our goal has been to, to use July to try and solidify numbers as a best case estimate on revenues and expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. We hope to receive Travis County assessors information by next Tuesday. We'll use our estimates the way that we've used them in the past and not necessarily go into theirs at this time. But if we receive their items, then we'll go back at that point and update the document. But that's required, that requirement is 731. So we'll have a budget document using our ClearGov module to the city council by next Friday. Then in, we'll have the month of August for council to review and make decisions. And then the September meetings are September 3rd and September 17th. What we would like to have is make sure our public hearings are scheduled according to those dates so that council can consider the budget steps on the September 3rd and September 17th. If we need an additional meeting the following week after the 17th, there is time before the 31st. And then the council has the obligation to approve and adopt a budget by September 30th. So that we can enact that budget by October 1. Any questions on that timeline? Council Robbins had something?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the what the council's been using, which is called, which I will call ClearGov. And compare that to what Josh has gone through in some detail, which is called, which I'm calling ClearGov Lago Vista. I found ClearGov Lago Vista about a month ago. And I have found ClearGov Lago Vista to, for, for our council to be a really useful tool for budgeting. Much more so than ClearGov straight. And Josh is, Josh and I visited about this yesterday. And the other point that I would make, which is not a biggie, but Josh, just to tell you that some of the numbers that you're giving us and what are saw in either ClearGov or, well, let me just say that some of the numbers are not matching up.
And yeah, I noticed that when we're clicking on, and so one of the things that, that Council Robbins and the mayor pointed out yesterday is when I click on some of these things that you see on my screen now, those modules aren't accessible to the council. And so that's a challenge. So we have to, we'll have to go back and forth between the two as we learn how to, as the staff learns how to make this system more effective and we get smarter at it, then we can make these documents readily available to, to more people.
Yeah, Josh, the point, and you and I went through this in great detail yesterday. If you, for the council, if you, if you on ClearGov and you click projects, you won't get anything. There's nothing there. If you look at it on ClearGov Lago Vista, you have a world of information that's available to you. And I had a whole bunch of answers yesterday for, for questions yesterday for Josh. Went on ClearGov Lago Vista, clicked a couple of three times, answered all my questions. It's great stuff. ClearGov Lago Vista, the module that we're laying out for citizens is really good stuff that.
Mayor, I'm going to click over to that section that Council Robbins is talking about. You can see on my screen. So what we have is, we have this tab on the top left where it says budgeting. And so each budget that we're working with, you'll see every fund that the city operates with. And then we'll be able to click that fund. So as we're preparing the document, to get to the thing that's ClearGov Lago Vista, the website that everyone can look at, this is how we're developing that budget. And so you'll see at the top, it'll show you expenditures, 12.822, revenues, 12.822, surplus, $0. So we've balanced the, the general fund budget. And then down here on the bottom, it'll show us multiple years and revenue and expenditure sources. When we go back to each of these, so we click over to the utility fund, we see the same thing, but for example, right now, the utility fund shows 9.8 million dollars in expenditures, 9.4 million dollars in revenues. Therefore, there's an additional deficit of 435,000. Those numbers would represent the opportunity to either cut expenditures or to add a additional transfer from the utility fund reserve to balance that budget. And you'll see there's an additional $3 million in this budget. And that is for capital projects transferring over. That's for equipment. That's for any kind of change in operations. For example, a merit increase, any cost of living increases, health insurance increase. All those numbers are tied into those expenditures. And at that point, you see what a deficit would look like on a screen. So as we looked at them a few weeks ago, and I showed council these pages the first time, you saw how deficits look, and that's, that's how it would appear. Let me click on this aviation fund. This will give you another example. So same thing, you've seen our aviation fund moving in terms of the operations. 2019 would be the first year it had, it was its own fund. 2020, the current year would be the second, and this would be the third. So you'll see this includes some capital purchases in 2019. But you'll see that right now for FY 21, the expenditures are 267,000. The revenues are 267,000 and the increases in percentage wise are, are similar, but they're different. Revenues being 31%, expenditure increase being 36%. And so this budget being the airport aviation fund is a balanced budget within itself with no appropriation from the general fund because it's a standalone fund. If after FY 20, if this fund makes money, then those dollars will create an aviation fund fund balance, which provides for future capital. So that's how we're, when we see this, that's what we're looking at on all these funds. Questions on that one?
Josh, you're in ClearGov, not ClearGov Lago Vista.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm only in ClearGov right now. This is the admin side. So let me show you the, I'll show you the area that we see, and this is, this is a breakdown. So on this left-hand side, we have a page that is projects. So as Council Robbins was talking about, we've listed out the projects for FY 21, broken them down into subfolders. Unfortunately, you don't see this on this module, but these are the projects I showed you on the ClearGov Lago Vista. That's the website that individuals can see, and this is what they'll see. So example, under street projects for next year, you have these four categories. You'll see the overlays, you'll see the fog seal, you'll see micro surfacing, and then you'll see Lowman Ford Street Rehab. and then you'll see Lowman Ford Street Rehab. If you click on the page, that was the ClearGov version, Lago Vista, you'll see basically this information right here that says overlay 14, should be 1431 in South Abogee and micro surfacing the rest of the way. This will scroll down, it'll give you the CIP document that you can access, and then it'll show you $450,000. Then it'll give you the project manager being our city engineer, Eric Belay. This also provides a timeline that says October 1, if approved, you would begin drainage construction. January, you'd advertise for the bid. March, you'd hope to have an award from the council. And then June, you'd hope to have the paving completed. By July, you'd hope to have the striping completed. So that shows you if council approves the project in the budget, then this is the plan for how we get it from approval to completion. And so that's why the module works out well as long as we can make it go from, from one to the other. So I'm going to go back to these projects and just show these as a whole.
I'm not getting projects. I'm, it's Tim, I'm not, I'm not getting that screen.
So the only way you're going to get that screen, because it's not there, is to go to the cleargov.com.
Lago Vista, which I got up, I've got up on my other computer.
Yep, click that one, click Lago Vista.
Yeah.
Click projects on that computer and then go to Street Rehab Lowman.
Well, I don't see projects on that. I got overview.
On overview, scroll down on the overview page.
All right.
Load it.
All right.
You see them listed there? Should look like my screen.
No. Hey Josh, I did the same thing, but when I clicked on the project for Lowman, what I see is Street Rehab Overlay, project budget. Those are the only two things that I see on cleargov.com. I don't see any, I didn't see any of that other stuff that you were talking about.
So right here below, if you look on my screen, do you see this street CIP below Street Rehab Lowman?
That doesn't show up on mine.
But you see the 450 in this project budget?
I see the budget, but it says general fund reserve of 905 when I click on the circle. And budget of 435, which is typed up top, yeah.
I don't see anything that says projects.
905 should be this one.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I see right there.
So this one's Street O, Street Rehab Overlay?
Yeah, but see, it doesn't have that, what you were asking me to click on, on the Street Rehab.
Okay.
I can't even get that far.
I had to double click on the oval, on a subject matter for it to pop up, but I double clicked and it popped up.
And Tim, are you signed in over here on the top right corner on, if you can see my screen? You can see Josh?
I see you.
Yeah, if you can, on yours, if you click it, you should be able to sign in. Maybe that'll open up some of those items.
Sign in where?
Top right corner.
All right. Under the settings or?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's going to do some interesting stuff, Josh, when you go to sign in.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get those screens up. So without seeing that screen, then I could not probably effectively walk you through it. But look at if, for council, I sent you the email earlier today of the CIP budget, just as a refresher on the number of projects, you see the individual breakdowns. That, that will look like, you'll have individual pages, but there'll be a breakdown similar to this. So it'll show you these projects in an Excel spreadsheet.
Yes.
And then down here on the bottom, which where the project information comes from, if you're looking at my screen, you'll see these tabs for each project. So if we look at miscellaneous project number one, which is underground utilities, we click that, it shows what the project is here, the description, the justification, the budget year, which is FY21, and then where it's funded out of right here, which is funded out of general fund.
I've, I've discovered the problem with the two pages.
Okay.
When we're, when we're signed into the admin page, we cannot open the public page.
Right.
It won't, it won't allow us to do both at the same time. Because when I tried, I tried signing out of the public page, and when I did, it signed me out of the admin page as well. So we.
If you sign out the admin page, Mayor, then maybe then you see, you can see the projects?
Yes, you do.
Maybe try that, Tim, is to sign out so it doesn't say Tim or Collins or anything up here, but sign out from your, from your ClearGov page like this.
Well, I've got my other computer up.
Oh, that's right, you're working on a separate computer even.
Well, I've got two computers, I've got this one and I've got my own.
I'm doing the same thing.
Yeah, so I would encourage you guys to look at the CIP, which is the, the list of these projects so that you can look at those and determine the value of the projects for next year. And then on that projects page that we talked about, these are those positions for the requested positions for next year. And each of these has an individual breakdown so that you can see the explanation of the request and how we get there.
Got it.
So you have, so remember, these are CIP projects. These are in that CIP five-year plan, which you'll have that full document in your budget book next week. Just remember that as well. And Council Robbins?
Debugging, which we talked about yesterday. The, the stuff in the detail on, for instance, on the page that we're looking at on the screen now does not match the project list. You know what I'm talking about, Josh?
I do, yeah, there's some, there's some transfer things that are separate. Okay. And that's why, so our challenge, this is part of that process that, and Council Robbins talking about the debugging. What we have to do between now and next week is we just got to make sure all of our numbers and our, and our writing matches. So typically, you wouldn't see any of this at this form or version because we would be putting it together and we would just have general discussions with individual pages handed out for review. Now you're seeing all of the preparation as we're getting this process going. So I'm going to take you over to this other page, and I want, this is the one that we need to focus on for a second. This is the capital request on the left-hand column on my screen. So your screen doesn't work for this one either for the council, but I'll show you the capital request page. This will show you over the next five years. And what you see there is you see five years of projects, capital projects laid out. Over that period of time, you'll see on my screen, there are 103 capital requests. That's projects and equipment for $74 million. So that's your, that's your big picture. So if I were to scroll down, you'd see these things listed out over and over and over again. So for example, one of those projects you'll see right here, wastewater treatment or water treatment plant number one expansion, $8 million. So that's, that's all the CIP projects included into here. And what it shows you is those dollars are expended over a three-year plan. And so when you can look at these projects, it'll show you that in FY21, that's $400,000. FY22, $4 million. FY23, 3.5 million. And so that shows you what that project is over time. And then it gives you the description and the justification that says as our city grows and the water demands increase, we'll need to expand our water treatment plants. So that's that project. I'm going to go back over here. So first you pull up the five-year CIP, which is very pretty, lots of fun colors. Then what you do is we're able to break it down so that we can focus on FY21. When we focus on FY21, we'll see that there are 37 different requests at 35 million. When we scroll down, we'll see a lot of these projects that may not necessarily be all into FY21. For example, wastewater treatment plant expansion. Only 395,000 of that is actually realized in FY21. But you've got another $5 million in expansion to occur over the following two years to expand the plant. The second thing this, this system allows us to do is we're looking at FY21. We've also listed out vehicles. Those are capital assets. So that'll show you that in next year's budget, you have 12 capital asset requests that total $712,000. When I click this tab, it breaks them up into the general fund, impact fees, unfunded utility fund. But we go here. All this will lead up to the, to the big finish here in a minute, so just work with me. So of that capital outlay right now, the general fund represents 290,000 for FY21. The utility fund represents 421,000. And then I can scroll down to here and look at those items. What this document does is it allows you to see everything. One of the questions last year, you know, Councilor Robbins had pointed out was with the streamlined budget that gave you the subcategories for each department, you're limited to seeing what some of those breakdowns are. You can still see what the fixed assets were in each department, but you wouldn't see how the personnel costs were broken down without getting the line item operating budget. Right here, this is going to show you, here's the breakdown of all those vehicles for that year inside of this document. So Ron Smith asked a question about our financial system encode, and does ClearGov take the place of encode? And the answer is no. So encode is our operating system, and ClearGov is a financial model for our budget and for transparency. So we'll still have encode. And what, what encode does, ClearGov took the numbers and transferred over from encode to create this module. And then we'll use their budget book to import the numbers back into our encode. So they'll work together. So this is how we'll view these requests as we're working on it. So let's say, for example, next workshop, council says, we only want to spend 200,000 in the general fund on capital assets. Well, we'll go to here, we see it's 290, and we'll start moving items in and out, working with staff. Or we'll go over to utility fund, and if you recall, the deficit was about 400,000 in the utility fund. Theoretically, we could remove all capital assets, excuse me, and say, without capital assets in utility fund, it's effectively balanced at that point. Any questions on the end goal for what these, what this module puts out for us? Yeah, it's, it's really just getting used to it and figuring it out. You know, someone made the comment today that, that the first year, you know, you're going to have to figure it out. Hopefully the second will be a lot easier. The, the goal is by the time we have this submitted to council, once it's approved and we get this all online, it'll be easier for citizens to review the documents at any time. And that's the value add that we want. You know, right now, if they want to look at the budget, they go online, they click under finance, and they click the budget document, and they scroll through and they look at the pages of the bud, operating budget for the year. This right here will allow them to type in something, go specifically to the department without having to search through page numbers, and then click specifically to the line items and give you breakdown.
Josh, does this model, like on this page that we're looking at, if you look at the first two items, you've got a 2005 Ford. It's, it's little, the writing's small, and then the next one is Mack Truck, which is 160,000. Does this model allow you to determine which is more important to have? What, what's needed by the city?
What we do is on here, there's a, there's a mechanism to click and ask the question to the department that submitted it. So for these two, let's say we're comparing the dump truck with the back truck. We submit that to the contact, which would be Eric Belay. And Eric tells us, hey, this one has greater value for our operations for next year. And, and it tracks that communication. So it tracks it online so that we can keep that record.
Okay.
And that's the same in on the line items for the budget. If we're over here on, I hate to jump, let me show you this. If we're over here on the budget and we're in the general fund, and we're looking at an expenditure, we click here, we're in the general government, admin, supplies. If I had a question about books, publications, and films and $500, then I would click this and ask a question. Now, obviously, that one would go back to me because I'm admin and that's my budget. But then that would turn this light green. And so everyone, when you have access to it, could click this green dialogue button and see any communication that I've had on this item. So when I go into, for example, if I went to the PD budget and I click one, I could ask chief, hey, what are we using the three new vehicles for? He would add it back into there, and the dialogue would say to replace existing vehicles.
Okay, I got it. So on the, one, one more question. On the example, on the water treatment expansion, if you can go back to that one?
Yes, sir.
You showed it over a three-year period, it's going to be like $8 million?
Correct.
So does that mean that within 2021, we have to initiate a bond to make that happen? Or how does that work?
And that's the, that's a perfect point for what we're looking at in terms of goals. So let me go and click that for you. So our, what, how we presented the budget now is we've presented it without a bond for this year. However, that's for, basically, that's for planning of projects. Next year, based on the projects that we have, including that project, we will have to have a bond to make these projects happen. So FY21, back to this example, you said. So FY21, back to this example, you said right here shows 400,000. We would pay that out of operations and fund balance reserves. But when we get to this next year, we will need to bond these projects to move forward.
Okay. But we don't initiate the bond until 2022?
Correct. We would start planning in January of 21.
Got you.
I think councillor Robbins was.
Josh, I'm looking at the spreadsheet that you sent us. Okay?
Yes, sir.
And, and this is the, this part of the debugging, the some of the numbers don't match. But water treatment plant expansion for 2021, there's 500 grand listed on the spreadsheet.
Yeah. And that would be this number right here. So that's what's showing the 400,000 on this. We know that this total number is supposed to be 800,000. So this number is just an error of 400. Instead, it should be the 500,000.
And then, and, and I'm, I'm having, to some extent, I think some of us, Dave particularly at this point, are trying to figure out how we can use these various tools that you're, you've given us to make a decision.
Right.
And so when I look at, look at the spreadsheet for 500,000 for water treatment plant one and the numbers either supposed to be four or five, whatever. You said, we're not going to bond it. My assumption is that that's cash then? And I can't tell from, I can't tell from the documents that that's the fact, but that, that's in fact your plan, that that's going to be cash.
Correct. Yes, sir. So that's operations and fund balance reserve.
Now, if I look at, if I go to, if I go to ClearGov Lago Vista and I click on water treatment plant one in the projects list, it'll tell me the funding sources on that doc.
Okay. So if I go to where Frank's talking about here. What number was that one?
You got it. You passed it a minute ago.
Water treatment plant one. So when that's all, when it's on Lago Vista, what it'll show you when this is finalized is it'll show you the amounts and then it'll show you a third section down here that'll give you the funding source, just like how the CIP listed out. Let me show you this one. So just like the CIP listed out. This shows on our CIP, this shows the utilities projects for the CIP from 2019 through 2025. And then down here on the bottom, it shows you funding sources per year. And you'll see on 2021, we do not have bonds labeled out. But on 2022, there are bonds and we'll probably have to move a larger amount into bonds between, depending on the projects.
Okay. I see. Okay.
So back on that, back to that question, the, the challenge is for council before we present that book next, next week is, is to get it so that you have information now as you're trying to provide that direction. And then once the book comes out, everything's going to be hardened like you typically have. And you'll have the paper document and then the items online should all match. Let me go back over to here. One of the things that's, that's a good tool for us is this creates that, that budget book. And so the budget book then allows us to look at the multi-year plan. And it breaks those projects down, how, how we've broken them down. And it'll show you that for affluent disposal, there's their number on the multi-year plan. Let's look at the one-year plan. It'll show you the total capital request in that one-year plan. And then it breaks it down into those projects. So you'll see all of these projects written down. Here's a good one for next year. This shows you the meter replacement at 1.5 million for next year. Your call from the, one of the emails I sent you this week, it showed that we just had our meters tested and a percentage of our meters came up as running slow. Therefore, meaning we're, we're missing out on use. And so what you do is, one of the questions that was just asked, is that a smart meter? Yes. So these are smart meter systems and it would eliminate some of the rereading process that we're having now. This AMI reading system would allow it to be very similar to how people have their PEC bills, where you can access real-time information online about your water bill. Which we see as a, as a value add, but they are expensive. You, you've got to have a system set up so that people can manage their accounts and they can see what their real-time use is. The meters we have now are, are smart meters as well in terms of a, of a radio read kind of system, but they're not next level smart. They don't allow for online real-time viewing. We have to do our real-time information. We have to request it and then we get it back from the company and then we can provide that to our customers. So this, this budget book that I'm showing you, what it does is it gives you that breakdown that, that will print it out and how it'll show up document-wise for individuals to see. Go back to this number here where it shows you the breakdown. And this will include everything that we've included in our capital improvement plan, which includes assets, vehicle assets. So this is fantastic. Here's another good one. If you click on the airport T-hangers for next year. So this will show you multiple projects. This will show you for FY21, we've budgeted 650,000. And then for FY22, it's 1.5 million. That's part of a bigger plan that the airport advisory board has been discussing. And this gives you the descriptions for how those tie in. And then when you go into the budget, you'll see kind of where councillor Robbins was talking before. You'll see that for the 650,000, we've budgeted revenue from our AIP dollars at a 75-25 match. So you'll see the revenue coming in at 75% of the 650,000. And then the 25% match would come out of general fund reserve or operation dollars. So that's just an example of how this budget book's going to work when we, when we get to that, to that document. Okay. Questions on those?
But it won't show up in the budget book how that breakdown actually exists?
The, the budget book will. Yes, sir. The budget book, once we present that for you, it'll be just like, it'll have, it'll, it'll pretty it up some more, but it'll have all the information that, that you're going to see in this CIP document here, which I, I really think that this Excel spreadsheet CIP document is fantastic. I, you know, the, the work that Eric and Victor have done to put this together. You know, it shows you here, T-hangers, $650,000. And then this final updated version will show you AIP grant down here for 475,000 plus or minus.
Okay.
Dr. Frank?
Dave Bucky. On the Lago Vista, or excuse me, ClearGov Lago Vista, some of them have a, the spreadsheet for the five-year CIP on it and some of them don't.
Every project should have them. That's the end goal. And that's the thing. So if it's the, if it's the street, this is what I was telling councillor Williams a minute ago. If it's the street project, then we want to make sure that the CIP for the streets can be pulled up at any point. And so right, right here, if someone's looking at Lowman rehab, they can click the street CIP and it takes them to the whole CIP budget for streets for five years. That's a pretty good value add because then someone, instead of going to the big spreadsheet of the street rehabilitation plan, they can go on here and see if their street's on a five-year plan. So each of these sections should, when completed, will have the supporting material and the funding source. Questions on all those items? I'm going to show you a couple more here and then we'll get to some more discussion. So the debt number we showed you before. So when I come over here to data on the left for council and I go down to our debt service fund, what you'll see here is you'll see the balances of each of the bonds that still exist with the city. So right now, we said the balance was 33 million. You'll see, for example, the 2015 GO refunding bonds have 6.8 million balance. The most recent 2017 COs are 7.4. And then total, you have, looks like five bonds that still have balances on them. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, maybe it's eight. There we go. Eight total. That, that'll fit our sheet that we put into your, into your budget book anyway. But this just shows you what that number looks like and then how those numbers have diminished over the years based on the repayment schedule. If you recall, on our, on our sheet that we use in our previous budget books, what we show you is that payment schedule, how much money goes to each. That's what this does for us here. And then if we click fund balances, this sheet right here does the exact same thing. It shows you what the fund balances for each individual fund have been over the last five years. So for example, you'll see that the capital projects, capital improvements fund, these are the projects that we had bond dollars for diminishes. And you'll see that the other funds, as we showed before, general fund and utility fund, you'll see the growth that those have had. Here's that hotel motel tax. You see that growth over a five-year period as well. And then here's your impact fees. That's actually, that includes both the impact fees as of the end of FY19. Fund balance is still being vital element for what we need to, to balance if we're going to increase services and/or projects for next year. Questions on those two? Debt or fund balances? Okay.
I'm just going to have to sit down and play with this.
Yeah. And you know, the same thing too, after you look at it, if there's a time that we want to look at it at the request together, you know, let's, let's spend, let's spend the time looking at some items. And that's what we want. We want you to scroll through all these items just so you're looking at the information. So I'm going to take you to this last section that I hit on briefly, and that's the staff request. So right now for next year, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight and a part-time request in here. What we need to do is, is we look at what the needs are for the departments. And based on the dollars, we have to decide and based on the determined needs, which pro, which positions are going to be funded? And then what the trade-off is on the revenue side to make those things happen. Personnel becomes a longer-term impact on the budget. Whereas a capital asset is a one-time impact on the budget. If you buy a truck in FY21, you don't pay for that truck in FY22, but you do pay for potential repairs to that truck in FY22. For the personnel, if you add a part-time recreation coordinator in FY21, then as long as you keep that position in FY22, you're going to have that position and you keep it, carry it over in your standard maintenance and operations budget.
So does that, so does that mean I need to go to each department head to try to get that information on? Or how do I?
You already have that information on the, the ClearGov Lago Vista page.
Okay.
And we already have the, the request for each position. We have those completed.
So when I click on one of those positions, what happens?
So for example, if I go here to street laborer and you'll see these two positions are the exact same layout and you can do this on the ClearGov Lago Vista page. Just to tell you, the street department operates out of the general fund. They're requesting two new positions. Those are street laborers. Those employees will create two full five-person street crews. Obviously this has been, this is directly to our challenge of doing more for our streets. So the street department, you'll notice in this top section currently has a street superintendent. Then you have two crew leaders, three laborers and equipment operator on each crew. That's, you'll, you'll notice there that, that that would give them the additional full five for each crew, if you add that position in there. Then when we scroll down, you will see that each position at a $15 per hour, hourly position is 50,361.56 and that's with benefits. So that's a benefited position based on full-time and with benefits, these position is an impact of 5361. The two positions as a whole would be 100,000.
But it, but are these new people that he's trying to add, is it for us to complete the plan that we have for 2021 on streets? Or this, by adding this street laborer, we're going to be able to do more than what we have planned?
What it does is it separates crews so that they have enough for traffic control and to do the work per site. And so effectively, it should provide for more efficient time in the work. So that, for example, if we have an issue, there's a crew working on drainage on Lowman and you have a deer that's been hit, that the park service can't get out for two hours and you want somebody to pick that up off of, off of Rockwood. You have the ability to not, not shut down a crew who's working on drainage on Lowman, but to send someone from another crew and not shut that project down.
Let me, let me, I was supposed to be quiet till the end, but it's not working. Josh, Josh and I talked about this position. And to try to cut to the chase where Dave's going, I'm pretty sure. And to do it in an open meeting instead of Dave and I visiting sidelines. Josh, what's your recommendation on this position?
Well, I, you know, I think these are, I, I think the tricky part here is, is to look at the effectiveness of the, of the whole system. I know last year, the request was for, for two employees and we added one because I felt we could handle that within the general fund. the request was for, for two employees, and we added one, because I felt we could handle that within the general fund. Overall, I like the idea of adding people to the street crew so that they can be more effective. My challenge, which is the challenge of every mayor and council, if you go back to my screen, you see that inside the general fund, we have to figure out what the value of, there's four park positions there, a part-time park position, two street departments, and a police officer. But they can't all go downhill. You gotta pick on some. So my thing is, I have to figure out what the balancing act is. And so by next week, you'll have a clear recommendation from me that says, this is how I think we should proceed.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
There, back to you.
All right. So this, this kind of goes back to our agenda, where the first thing on here was our, our goals. You know, we're looking at our operating budget, but what staff is looking for us today is to present him with our goals. And, you know, I can say, because I know this is based on our 65 cent tax rate right now, as far as our, our general fund goes, you know, one of my goals is to reduce our tax rate from 65 cents downward. So in order to do that, we're either gonna have to reduce the amount of transfer from the general fund reserves to maintain our, our proposed budget, or, you know, we're gonna have to cut some, cut some, some items. And when you look at these eight laborers that are requested, those aren't even figured in yet. So you go anywhere from 50 to $75,000 impact per person. You know, you're looking at another 500 or 600,000 to our budget that hasn't even been factored in yet. You know, so as we sit here today and we give him our, our goals, that's when Josh is gonna have to get back with his department head and say, okay, you know, council has came down and said they want to reduce our tax rate, so we're gotta, we've gotta cut 150,000 right off the top. And then, you know, that's without even touching these, these proposed staff members. You know, and then the same thing goes for the utility fund. You know, we were, if you looked at that one page, we were already showing a, a deficit of 435,000 the way it is right now. So we're either gonna have to cut some things out of, out of that utility fund budget to get it down to the 9,400,000 range. If not, that's an additional source that's gotta come out of the general fund to cover that. Where the part of that water rate structure study that we did was to get our water rate set so that we are not having to transfer money from the general fund to cover, you know, our expenditures in the, in the utility fund. And so hopefully, between the study that Nalissa did and that the, the study that our subcommittee is doing, hopefully, as we iron out our, our budget for utility fund, we'll not only be able to set our rates to cover this budget, but possibly even reduce the utility cost for the citizen. So it's, you know, it's a, it's a big task trying to figure out what, what we're gonna set this budget at. So that's, that's why we need to give him our, our goals tonight so that they can go to work on, on adjusting these numbers.
Mr. Mayor?
We need mayor.
Yes, no. Mayor's Tim Collins. I just don't think this is the time to be reducing and cutting. It's not necessary. So I, I will have a discussion with you about the tax rate. I don't believe this is the time to be going backwards.
Okay. Yes, Frank.
I've got about four and a half million dollars that, that it's a biggie. But I've got, at some point, we might talk about how we can find four and a half million dollars of cash that we can move around. And that four and a half million might be able to be used for tax reduction.
Nope. That would be nice. That's a, that's a substantial amount.
Let me, let me just say the magic word, bonds.
Man, I think part of that discussion from what you were saying too, one of the things that, that staff's been looking at is, what projects do you change? You know, our, our challenge every year is to make sure, whether it's bond projects or, or non-bonded projects, how many projects can you do effectively in a year? I think this, the street package that we have laid out for next year, I hope we can keep all that in there. I think we're gonna be aggressive in getting it done. But I know that collectively throughout the year, there'll be a challenge to get some of these projects completed. You'll see this year, we completed the streets, and then we came back asking for more. But on the flip side, I told you, we would have a library city hall expansion, and we should be up and going by now. And if you look out my window, you see trees. So I can tell you, sometimes we get it done, and sometimes we fail miserably on our, on our staff side. So that's our balancing act of, how much can we handle in the course of a year effectively and continue with the flow? So yeah, the, the tax rates are perfect when mayor, some of these projects on here, they have some, I think they have flexibility in them. So the decision's gonna have to say, if you want to move that number, or even if you don't want to move the tax rate, but you want to add a couple of those positions, we gotta free up from your estimates, mayor. We gotta free up 100,000 to 140,000 for two positions.
Josh, is there a way of you being able to list what you effectively think we can do in the year? And then list what the stretch goals would be?
Yeah. So, and one of the comments that City Engineer just sent me a few minutes ago was just that. You know, when it comes out that we need to, to stretch them out to FY22, you know, look at the, look at what we were talking about earlier about water and wastewater expansion. So one of the things that we need to do now is, we need to start the engineering and design process so that we know what type of expansion is needed. What we're banking on now are the things that we know. And what we know is new homes per year for the last three years are 250 to 300 homes per year. Those are standardized, and we know typically what the use is with those. What we don't know is, you know, online, I read that someone's proposing a 50,000-unit development. Holy cow. Whoever does the 50,000-unit development, we can't supply them with water and wastewater. We probably can't even supply them with trash collection. So our engineering has to start now to plan for the expansion. Now, back to the stretch portion, we start that planning process now. When we get that finished in the year, and then we show up at FY22 when you're trying to plan, maybe the developments haven't sped up to the point where we need to start the expansion projects at that point. Maybe those go to FY23. I don't know. You know, I'm not a, I'm not that good at estimating how much development and expansion we're gonna have. So those are things that I believe, Councilor, that, that's where we, that's where we look at internally, and we stretch it. What typically, if nothing happened between today and next Tuesday, for example, then what we'll do internally, I'll, I'll be meeting with staff, we'll make some changes. And then if I need to make a decision, I'll make that decision with our management team, and then I'll present that to council. You'll be presented with balanced budgets. And then you'll have the month of August to decide if you like the proposals that we've sent to you, or if you want to change it again. So what it'll do effectively, Councilor, is I'll put in there what our recommendations are, and then you just decide it's good or bad. So yes, we'll stretch them out and change the plans based on our assumptions.
Also, if you have the current tax rate and what we're planning to do, we can accomplish those things. Rebuilding roads, we've got water treatment, we've got these other things. Why cut at a time when we have an opportunity? No. For example, on, on street repairs and, and doing the streets, we had initially budgeted 1.5 million dollars to do streets. But then we saw that we had additional monies, and we could add another 500,000 to do more streets. Is that, is that how you're planning this, Josh? So that we can, we have additional dollars to shift around to do, to speed up the project?
Yeah, yes and no. So you'll, you'll look at the growth of, we just go down here to the street department, since you gave that example. You know, last year, we were budgeting at 1.4 million for the street department, not the projects. And then this year, we're showing 1.5 million. And so that's an increase. But what it is, is the additional work on the streets that goes into that street improvement plan as well. So yes, in terms of, we want to keep, I mean, the street plot plan, what I think is, it's probably priority one, or maybe it's priority two, with public safety being the first, and then, and then streets being the 1A, that our citizens have said, can you please focus on that? And so those are harder to stretch, because we just have implemented that plan. But that, you know, to me, it all closes, it all ties into the bigger pie, and which type of, of approach are you gonna take next year? And as I, as the mayor and I were talking earlier, I, I just don't know that the, I don't think the council's gonna tell us, let's cut back on the streets. But if you want to cut back on streets, 300,000, tell me that now, and we'll, we'll alter the plan, and that'll be in the, that'll be in that budget document.
No, I don't, I don't want to cut back on streets, but if we had a surplus of money, and we could put more money towards streets, I would like to know that, okay, we're in June, or, and we got another 200,000, we could, or 500,000 that we could spend on streets, are we going to be able to shift money around to put that additional money into? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, on a typical year, on a typical year, I'd say yes. But right now, since we're moving, since we're, if we're gonna pay these things out of cash, then we're pretty much cash-funded, all the ones that we can handle. Like you said, if for some reason, the, the revenues versus expenditures, you know, if you look at the financial statement that Star sent us out today, you'll see that we're doing very good on our expenditures. You know, that's fantastic. And the revenues are seemingly pretty dang good too. So even though we're spending it, we, we're, we've done a good job as our revenues increase to not exceed those. And so I think Councilor Robbins pointed out the last meeting, you know, we're gonna be as conservative as possible on the revenue estimates, and as liberal as possible on the expenditure estimates. But as you're saying, you get to June again, and there's a, there's 300,000 that you think's there that we could attack another couple of roads. Yeah, we'll, we'll present that back, but what that'll do is, that'll get us ahead on the street program for FY22. So yes.
Okay.
Josh, can I, can I lay out my biggie now?
Tell a no, man.
Here's the biggie. This is the way I listed it yesterday to Josh. I would bond, Josh is proposing to move 4.06 million into capital improved, into capital items, so you can cash items. That's just what he's, what he just noted. I would bond the 4.06 million, and maybe actually add to it, tough to say, 6 million for additional streets. That would leave available 4.06 million in the proposed budget that we could use for projects, because we got 4.06 million in cash to work with. The cost of the current residents, or 15 to 20-year bonds, would decrease over the term of the bond, and would be less over the term of the bond for the current residents than cashing it next year. And Josh and his staff have been good enough to give me that, a document that proves that. The bond approach becomes less expensive to current taxpayers in six to seven years. That's current ta, how is that? Because of the growth that we have in our tax base, and that growth in the tax base goes, some of, a portion of that goes to capital improvements. But certainly, given the data that Josh and his staff have provided, it becomes cheaper for current residents to bond in at least 10 years. And it's probably six to seven. So that's the biggie. 4.6, 4.06 million.
Good.
Josh, I know you don't like this. I just got to say that for the council.
So I was ready to play. I gotta think about it a bit, too.
Yeah, it, it's just laying it out. I'm just throwing out a night, a biggie for us in this process, because we're early.
I just, I just don't think you can work on balancing a budget and doing a bond at the same time. I mean, true, we can, we need to look in, we need to look at, when do we initiate a new bond? I, I agree with that. But I'm not sure if during this budget process, we, we, we don't have enough information on a bond to, to incorporate that into this budget right now. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. No, I think continuing revenues, continuing growth, a lot of that can be done as revenues grow. So I'm not, you know, going into debt to provide that, which may come over a longer period of time with the city's growth might be an alternative. I mean, we are doing what we said we would do, is replacing the streets, fixing the streets, and doing the utilities. So I don't know how much faster that bond would get us to completing all the streets. I don't think it'll get there. And then we have, we have debt. I'd rather do a debt for utility improvement, water treatment, than to provide cash.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have expressed on a number of occasions that I do not think that indebted, our citizens indebted in our city down the road is necessarily the best thing to do. I understand what Mr. Robbins is saying. I have seen some information on that. I have looked at everything that he's got, but if you can, you are always better to pay as you go. Ask anyone that has done a business where they have paid as they go. Ask anyone that has done a business where they have paid as they go. You don't run into financial crisis. You don't run into situations where you can't pay your bill. If you pay it and you go. Now, do I think that we're going to get into a financial bind where we cannot pay our bills? No. Do I believe that we are going to continue to experience growth and expansion in our city? Yes. Do I think that probably our revenues from sales tax, hotel tax, those kind of things are going to increase? Yes. And I just don't think that it's necessary for us to look at embedding the city for another 20 or 30 years down the road when we've already got $33 million worth of debt from doing that very thing. The more we can pay as we go, the less we endet the city, the better it is for everybody, in my opinion.
I'd agree, especially in light of people are thinking are cutting our income and going into debt is folly.
Yeah, there's always, there's always a balancing act in there, though, because it, for me, it depends on the, the project and, and what funding source it requires. So we have, we have to look at, we have to look at the project and what we need as to whether it's something worth bonding out or not. Because there's definitely, there's definitely some projects that you can't do with cash on hand and you have to, you have to take it out for a bond. So there's always, there's always a, there's always a balancing act in there of what can you pay cash for and, and what can you not? And how do you, you know, how do you, how do you balance those two? So, you know, right, the last couple of years, we've been working on cash basis, trying to get our, our bond debt down. So that we, because we know that in another year or two, we're going to have some projects that we are going to have to bond out. And so we've been reluctant to do any bonding the last two, two or three budget cycles. Just because we know what the future holds and we're, we're getting to that point where we are going to have to, to figure out what we want to bond out and what we don't want to bond out. And, you know, like, like Dave was saying earlier, I don't know if, I don't know if we're there yet now or not. The consensus that I got from, from staff was that we weren't, we weren't there yet, but next year would probably be the year.
Yeah, I, I think when we get to the water treatment plant expansions, that we're going to have to do some bonds. But until we get to that point, I don't think we need to do bonds.
I have no problem with infrastructure expansion, so I understand the need for that.
So it, you know, at some point, we'd have to get with Tom Lawrence and see, you know, when, when do we, when's the best time to go out for bonds and, and the rates and stuff like that? And then start working on our bond package, because we got to, you know, we'll have to decide depending on the amount, is it going to be a CO or is it going to be a GO? There's a lot that goes into that bond package. And then, yeah, I don't know if we're, I don't know if we're quite ready to put that together or not.
Well, I do know that we have that plan and that would be another to keep our cash as it is with the tax rate. And in order to be able to absorb that on in the next year. If we know we have debt coming up, we, we need to have revenue.
Josh, do we have any idea when we might see numbers from the county?
Mayor, they said they're planning on the 27th, so I would say Monday or Tuesday. And that's their, that's their revenue projections, their new legislation calculations. We can create the worksheet, Mayor, if we don't get it from them, we'll create the worksheet and provide that for council just the same, so you can look at it, too. I know part of that.
We didn't get it till August, late August last year.
That's right. And you remember, they were trying to, they were going through this calculation process and then they said that the legislation caused delay. And so we delayed through almost all of August so that we could wait. But, but our goal is, you know, this is getting some input a little sooner, but still not even as soon as what I think we, what we could do. I mean, I think we could, we could typically have this process wrapping up by the first of July instead of the end of July. But we're still trying to, as you said, we're trying to maximize our projections, even looking at the, at the Ju, June financials today and trying to calculate those numbers and compare May financials to, to June. You know, there are numbers there you want to be able to look at so you can project out effectively. And that's, that's all part of that calculation, but we'll tie it in in our document.
This is, Josh, let me ask a question. If you, if you take the 65 cents ad lib taxes and do the budget book against the 65 cents, and then we could look at maybe, i- if, if Mr. Mayor is looking to reduce ad lib taxes, I would like to know if you, if you lowered it one cent, what that would be for the citizens. If you lowered it two cents, what would that be for the citizens? Because I, I, I think we need to keep, personally, I think we need to keep the money at 65 cents, but.
I've worked it out, it's about 11, 11 bucks a month.
Yeah, see, I, I don't think, I don't think that's worth taking away money from the city to do the necessary projects that we need to do.
I mean, we all said we would do these projects and I want to do them.
Yeah, I do, too.
I think we figured out last year, one cent was like $120,000, something like that.
Yeah, right at 100 and 109 to 120,000 was per penny of revenue to the city on ad lib.
So that works, that works from the city? I don't understand.
Josh.
What was the question? How do you?
Divided by how many households? 120 divided by 4,000?
4,000 plus or minus.
Which works out to nothing.
Well, and your number there, just looking at the numbers, I think your numbers are, are on a higher end. If we use the median household income or actually go a little higher and do 300,000, the one penny on the tax rate is going to be roughly $30 for the year. And so $30 for the year divided by the 12 is going to give us $2.19.
Yeah, it's not worth it.
So what's the purpose of doing that? That does, that doesn't add any value to those homeowners. I mean, I mean, I, I would like to be doing something to save people money, but if, if, if you're just talking $30 a year, that, that makes.
Well, yeah, it, it's easy to say, but then you've got the county that comes in and raises the value of their house 8%. So now they're 8%, so now their $300,000 home is a $324,000 home. And you're multiplying that by 65 cents and then there's.
For how long? We've lived with it.
And they're, you know, their, their school district taxes are going up. So the, you know, the, the, the impact for the city itself may be extremely minimum, but when you add in all the other factors, their tax bill may go up several hundred dollars or if not thousands, you know, so.
There's a greater threat to the citizens on the ESD tax than there is on ours. And the tax, the values of the houses did not go up this year and the, Travis is going to have a problem evaluating houses next year. But we've been living with this for how many years? And it's just, and again, it's negligible, but yes, the county is increasing their taxes, the ESD is increasing their taxes. Leave ours where they are because we discount off of the taxable amount. We dick's account discount 30, 35% already.
And that's also something you can always consider as a council is if you want to change those exemptions. You know, and that may, a lot of people, if they don't do the overall tax rate, they may consider a change in exemptions that could be worth X dollars or be to a certain group of people.
I just, I think we just have some momentum going here in the city. The streets are being replaced, people like it, we do have to expand our water, we've got amenities, we've got airport, we've got parks that we're paying for. And, you know, I, I think, well, I think our legislature is more hostile towards us than it should be, but I still think there's going to be an impact from legislation. I just think we're going, we're doing good right now. Things are moving, they're humming, we're not arguing about money, we're not scrimping. We're not saying our streets, we've got it $500,000 like we did in 2017. We've got a million and a half, we got two. And we're doing it with what we have.
Yeah, and I, Mayor, I go back to, to Counsel Williams on this. So even based on a couple of these discussions, we're going to be able to put together the budget book. And then, you know, that final, that final document, because that's one challenge, we need to meet that. And then that challenge is just to get it back to council to say, hey, you make those big decisions when you want to vote on it. You vote on the tax rate and you vote on the fee schedule. And any changes you make on those will change out. If we need to discuss a, a larger ticket item, then we'll discuss those. And then within that book, if there's a, you know, there's a couple of things you and I have talked about that we'd like to see potentially engaged next year and we'll present those items. And if we, if we have to make changes to the overall, to the operating budget, once it's timed, then we'll just make those changes.
And the other thing about the legislature on this rollback thing, once we start going back, it's going to be incredibly difficult to go back up if we had to.
Well, and something else, something else that's good as far as our budget goes, we have our revenues, we have seen a decent increase in our sales tax. So, you know, if, if the Vis, the Lago Vista Village Shopping Center gets tenants in it.
Man, there, there's all kinds of stuff happening at this point.
I'm sorry?
I said, there's all kinds of stuff happening at this point. We've got, we've got some great opportunities may hit this year. Yeah, sales taxes up, hotel tax, what else is up? There's all kinds of stuff.
Mayor, I was going to clarify the question by Darcy. She'd asked about the budget book. I thought I touched on this earlier, but I may have skipped it. There's a couple of things that individuals can do by using the cleargov.com access. So if you look on the screen, you can go to this download financials. But the second, yeah, I think that's where Paul has clicked that for you. But the second part is when we print the budget book, just like we do when we're not using ClearGov, on the website, we will post the link to the entire electronic document. And individuals can, will have a hard copy in City Hall as well. So individuals can, can review that or request hard copies of that document just the same. So we'll have it the same method. We're just utilizing something totally different on how we prepare it. So you'll have access to it as soon as the council gets it, then we'll post that as a public document. Yeah. That's one of the questions that, that Letha had asked me last week, because the challenge for like the workshop is, if you recall, you know, people that are interested, they want to pull the document up and look at it with council and flip through it the way the council would. Well, now you're getting the same pains that Counsel Robbins pointed out to me, if you can't see it. So we've got to finalize that. But we'll make sure it's all posted and, and out there.
Yeah, and it'll be, like Josh said, it'll be, the book is not prepared yet, but when it is prepared, it will be available, both hard copy and electronic, so.
Yeah, and that's the best part, because what we've been doing in the past, when we call something electronic, that means we're just putting a PDF version of the budget online and not a, not a workable version. This ClearGov model allows you, I would say, faster access, probably some more information. I mean, people will recognize, we typically don't put demographic information in our, in our budget documents. Why? Because they just take up space and we aren't having on the website, but why not? Well, this right here, this is fun to add in, so people have that information so they can look at it. And then they can make these comparisons based on, based on the average, the, the information provided. So I think it's going to be a good value add this year to put it into the system.
So on our agenda, are we missing? We missing anything?
The only thing, Mayor, is we would just need to go ahead and plan our, our next meeting. Theoretically, you could do that tomorrow, because as a reminder, anybody that's on the meeting tonight, City Council has a special meeting tomorrow at 5 o'clock to consider the Lakeside at the Sarah Pid. There's three items on that agenda. So if you set that, if we could set the idea today of our next meeting, Mayor, or tomorrow, that would be great. We do have an August 6 council meeting scheduled. Theoretically, it could be that if you wanted to meet that following week, we could meet inside the week of the 10th through the 14th. Or we could schedule it prior to the meeting on the 6th even.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm open for whenever. We're, we're working for council. I'm on vacation until the 4th, but I'm not going anywhere, so. I'll be around.
Staycation.
Yeah.
If we get, if we get the document out by the 31st, then that would give council the first through at least the 8th for review of that. And then, like I said, the following week's the week of the 10th and then the 17th will be scheduled to, that, that week for our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Yeah, the 11th or 12th will work. I've worked the 10th and the 13th, so 11th or 12th would be good for me.
12th would be good.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I'm good with whenever, everybody else is good. I'm open either time.
I'm super flexible with the laptop and an internet.
Yeah, I like that. So Mayor, you want to shoot for the 12th?
Sure.
We'll get that to, to Sandra to advertise and, well, there we go. Paul's good, Darcy's good for those dates. So I mean, that's, I'm setting a meeting now.
Well, Paul spoke for Darcy. I'm not sure we know that for sure.
I know, but, but it was on there, so if it's written, it must be real. Sandra will set that date, Mayor, that will give us the, the 12th of August for our next budget workshop.
I see Frank's got a finger up.
Will we have a chance to vote up or down on the individual projects? You know, what I'd like is, you mean after the budget book?
After the budget book, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, no, you can't tell in a budget book a project. Right. I mean, typically, that's not in the budget book. The projects are, right now, listed, although they're not all of them, but the way they're listed, the, the project The projects are right now listed, although they're not all of them, but the way they're listed, the, the project in ClearGov Lago Vista is what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
Those are the projects. In other words, we're going to increase the budget by, what is it, 4.86, something like that? What are those things that, what are the projects that resulted in 4.86? Can, and they're, yeah, those are the projects. Will we get a chance to vote up or down on those individually?
Yes.
Okay. And then one other question, Mayor, if I could, we're moving 4.06 or probably May. The proposal is to move 4.06 from reserve to capital. Are we still going to have 25% of our budget left in reserve?
Yeah, Mayor, so based on that appropriation, we'll make sure that we're maintaining that, that unmounts base that's on the principles, the financial principles. And we'll limit that, we'll highlight that. That's one of the items that'll be included in that budget book, which is kind of fun separately. I mean, we put it in there anyway, but we'll have the budget principles in the document so you can look at it.
It may come, we may not, we may decide as a council not to move 4.0 whatever. We might only want to move 3.5 to maintain a certain reserve fund balance. And if that's the case, then we'd have to cut, you know, a project, a $500,000 project. Or find it somewhere.
Yeah, so that covers the, that covers the whole topics of discussion for the day, Mayor. I'll just remind council, I did send out that CIP document to you, check that out. And then we did send out the June financial today. So when you get a chance, check that one out too. That one showed some really good numbers that I think we can, we can look at and use that as a base. You know, June gives us basically three quarters of the year with just July, August, September remaining. So you just have to factor in the final quarter.
Yes, Frank.
One of the, and I've looked at the financials. There are some really interesting numbers in there, Josh, and tell me if I'm wrong. The utility income is down from last year at this, at this date and time. Am I reading that correctly?
Yep, let me flip right there right now since you asked the question. I can show you easy on the chart.
Yeah.
And this is something, that's general. This is utility. This is that discussion we had last week. So you're looking at it, you'll see the monthly income for June of 20. That's this past month was 601. Last year for June was 629. And then these two columns in the center are your year to date. So last year, you're at 5.5, this year 5.1. And so those are numbers, those are numbers that you see the differences. Now, if you flip over to the right-hand column, you'll see that the expenditures are down 800,000.
Yeah, and, and we haven't, you know, we're into the big, the, when water makes money for us, that's the, the season we have now. So that's not a huge issue. The other biggie that I noticed in this, Josh, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that the difference year to date in the golf. Golf is down only 17 grand. And we're into the part of the year that makes money. Are we, are we seeing a trend that the golf course may make money this year?
I know. So the good news is you're wrong. That's also the bad news. So look, there's two positive things on this chart that's on the screen. You see the year-to-date income for the golf course is up $40,000. So it's got 40,000 greater revenue. But then look at the expenses over here on the far right column. The year-to-date expenses are down 17,000. So 40 in the 17, there's a $57,000 difference to the positive side this year over last year, but there's still a deficit of 289.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
You know, and that's.
When you realize we were at 5, 5, 5 two years ago and we're at 289 now? I mean, that's, that's substantial headway in just a two-year period, so.
Yeah, these charts are fun and they're pulling these up are really good. You know, look at this one right here, real quick, Mayor. You look at this one on the aviation fund. A lot of people don't get a look at these. So since they're here, you'll see revenues being slightly down this year. That's these two columns here. And you'll see the expenses being down. So the difference last year at this time was approximately $30,000 in negative. Well, this year in this quarter, we're at 7,000. So potentially by the end of, of July, the July financial, you're going to see this fund being revenue positive. And that's that, that's that trend. Some are greater expenditure, so it's harder to get there. Some are not as great in expenditure, so it may not be as difficult. So I, I get excited about next month's financial statement just to see it. And it, just like what you said earlier, Mayor, when you were mentioning the sales tax number, here's a number people haven't looked at either. Dave probably can't see that one, but this shows that, it shows that July distribution for the sales tax at 70,693. So you just see that revenue projections, we're seeing a lot of positive trends going on right now collectively throughout the city. I agree with Council Collins, you just want to keep that going in the right direction.
Just remember, that same amount goes to a bus too.
Yeah, goes to that some.
Let's hijack the bus. Things are good. Good job, Josh. Good job, people. We're going in the right direction.
Mayor, if you got one more second, Darcy asked about the library expansion project. Just wanted to give the update. We're working with the contractor or with the architect to complete the plans. And then we're going to rebid, not as a design build, but we're going to rebid as a construction. So once, we're still moving forward in the same place we would have been had we been able to do the design build as we had, as council had approved. But we're going to do it so that we get all the plans finished and then people can just bid on building the building out. So we're still moving forward as planned.
Not quite as planned. We're a little bit behind timeframe, time-wise, but.
A year behind, but.
Did you lose a contractor? Is that what happened? Because the last I remember is that we paid for some insurance bond for him.
So I'll go ahead and recognize Darcy at this moment since she didn't ask to be recognized.
I thought we were discussing my subject.
Mayor, let me, if you mind. The clarification is we didn't lose the contractor and the city never paid for anything with that contractor. The council approved increase in the appropriation for the contractor if we were able to get the contract in place. So what happens is if you look at the, how the council takes those actions, they approve us to negotiate and execute the contracts. We couldn't get the contract agreed upon with the contractor. Therefore, we didn't pay them anything. The good news is they weren't out anything on any of their expenses except time. And since we couldn't come to it, we moved forward with this project as we had told council before, we had a backup, we could go ahead and do it this way. And so the good news is for the contractor, they're interested in bidding the project after we get the engineering and architecture completed. So I think it's positive. I don't know if they'll be the person that, that's selected by council, but minus that whole losing out on eight months to a year, we're still moving in a good direction.
And Eric has asked us to remind people to fill out their census again.
Twice.
Yeah, I haven't looked. We were at 25, 20, almost 27% the other day. So we're, we were like 15 out of 18,000 cities in the United States, we were like number 15,000 something, almost 16,000. We're like in the bottom 3% of the nation.
You know, they're supposed to have door knockers, but I haven't seen any or heard of any in the city at all.
They were, they're scheduled to start sometime in August or September.
Great.
They were hoping to not do that process. They were hoping that the online service would work to a point that they didn't have to do that, but.
Yeah, that's voluntary.
So if you're looking for some extra money, you can sign up for a job.
25 bucks an hour. Plus expenses, plus per deal. Not that I've looked at.
All right. Are we good? You got your direction there, Josh?
Good on our end, Mayor.
All right.
Adios.
Unless I see anything from council? No? All right, I'm going to call, this meeting adjourned at 7:00 PM.
All right, I'll stop the recording now and we'll close the meeting.